WSU.edu.
An air stagnation advisory now in effect. Partly sunny skies this afternoon, highs in the middle to upper.
Regular meeting of the Public Works and Finance Committee. This is be our only committee meeting today. I know that a lot of people hear about the recycle carts and roll carts in the alleys, and that is on the agenda. We put it towards the end to make sure that folks who were thought it was a 4:30 meeting would still be able to get in close towards the end. I don't know if we'll make it till 4:30 though, because we're pretty famous about running a meeting pretty quick in here, so. First off, on the agenda is the approval of the Public Work Finance Committee meeting minutes from December 14th, 2015.
Looked good to me.
And I'm good with them also.
All right, then we'll consider those approved. Next up is the disbursement report with Sarah Banks, but she's not here yet, so we'll have, we'll skip down to number three, the Idaho Commission on the Arts Entry Track Grant, and Alisa Anderson, and it looks like Kathleen Burns are going to present that to us. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. So you want us to talk for a while, right?
You don't have to talk too hard if you don't want, but go for it.
So, um, this is a grant that we actually applied for back in 2008, I think it was, eight or nine. And, um, basically, the Idaho Commission on the Arts gives organizations that have arts programs the opportunity to apply, apply for working capital, basically, but they do ask in the application, they kind of pinpoint or target some of the types of things that you anticipate doing with the money. So we don't exactly know how much they will award us. They take a look at the exhibits that we need to provide within the application, which includes a financial statement, so basically, a revenue and expense statement that we'll use from FY '17 or '16 budget will be included in the application, and then an outline of the different programs that we manage throughout the year. And I did have a call from Councilmember Steed this morning.
Give me interruption. Can y'all still not hear? I've getting motions from people that they're not hearing in the room.
Give us one. Maybe pull the, pull them mics closer a little and see if that.
That was nice.
Cut you some slack.
Okay.
Yeah, we're good.
Hello?
That's kind of. All right.
Would you like me to start over?
Just continue.
Okay. Okay, so as I was saying, the Idaho Commission on the Arts will take a look at the exhibits that we provide, talking about the programs that the Arts Department does throughout the year, and the financial information, and how much they have in the pool for the upcoming grant funding season, and then they'll decide how much will be awarded. So, um, we don't apply for a certain amount on this one. And I'll let Kathleen tell you a little bit about what they did with the last round that we had for the entry track.
Okay.
Did I put you on the spot there, Scotty?
But that's okay.
I think we used it for the Young People's Arts Festival.
Yeah. And hiring different professionals to work with the Young People's Arts Festival. But with this next round of money from the Idaho Commission on the Arts, we have the Northwest Public Arts Manager Conference is being moved this next year in '16 to Coeur d'Alene, and it would be a really great opportunity for some of the folks on the Arts Commission to attend the public arts conference. So that's kind of a goal. Also, I talked to the city of Boise and their public art department about having, they have a person on staff, Josh, that just deals with maintenance and installations of public art pieces in Boise, and does an annual review of conditions. And I thought it would be great to have him come up and do a baseline on our current collection of public art here in Moscow, just to get us started for future.
We're not saying we don't maintain our public art, but we don't really have a schedule or a plan as far as.
Correct. Yep. So it'd be great to just get started on that.
So he'd be able to consult with us and help us put together a program?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Okay, what kind of, is there anything from us that's needed as far as monetary?
No.
No commitment by the city?
No, just an approval to submit the application, a recommendation.
See what we can get?
Yeah.
Let's go fishing.
Yeah, my only question, and I asked Alisa this earlier today, was what's the anticipated amount we might get, so that could be greater than her time and effort to put in the application?
Right.
I didn't want her to put in several thousand dollars worth of work to get 50 bucks back. She says it's more like the other way around. It's not, it's not a real hard application, doesn't take a whole lot of time, and we generally get, you may have said this when I was out, around.
It was around $3,000.
$3,000 to $500, something like that in the past. Okay, so I'm good.
Gary?
I would note that that is a discussion we have before applying for any grant, is whether the amount of time it's going to take to apply is worthy of the potential for getting the grant.
And I, and I will say too, with, as you can see, the next item on the agenda is another ICA application, so being able to submit them jointly at the same time will also save time, because some of the forms are exactly the same. And so it worked out really well for us.
Okay, so if you guys are okay with moving this forward, we can put that on the consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
All right. Next up then, as Alisa mentioned, is Idaho Commission on the Arts Public Art and Cultural Facilities Grant Application.
Okay.
So if you want to tell us about that?
Yes, they're both due on February 1st, so as I said, we'll be able to jointly put those together. Kathleen has been working with the library, and it's been a discussion for quite a while now about the placement of some public art at the library. It's been listed in our plans as a priority in the citizen survey. And so Kathleen has worked with the Friends of the Library, and the library staff, and the Moscow Arts Commission, and so they're ready to put it together now that we have a plan, so I'll let her kind of discuss with you the process and how that will take place.
Okay.
So in submitting for this grant, they, they have just started funding public art again with Idaho Commission on the Arts. This is only the second year. So they pulled off funding for public art for quite a few years, about eight years. So they're back funding it. We're looking at putting together a project at the library, which was the number one placement in the citizen survey for public art. It's also been identified in the public art master plan as a location for public art. We've had two meetings with Friends of the Library, Chris Sokol, the library director, myself, and also a member of the Moscow Arts Commission, in talking about a proposed project for the library. So the Friends has given a verbal commitment, and will give a written commitment for 5,000 for the public art. We'll have 5,000 in our existing 1% budget, and then we're applying for 10,000 through Idaho Commission on the Arts. So that would be a total project value of 20,000. And the way the grant is set up is you have a year to do a project. So not knowing what that project is, that would be a part of the project, and we have all the guidelines in place for selecting public art, putting the process together, the master plan, so we're just in alignment for this grant, so we're going to apply for it.
So that would include putting together an RFP and doing a call for artists, and then having a budget that would allow us to also then construct the art piece with this funding, so it'll go from beginning to end, all within the same budget?
The entire 20,000, start to finish, RFP, everything right down to paying for the piece of art?
Call for art, yes.
That's correct.
Okay. And I see it's, that's why we're, we in the library are coming up with five apiece, is it's a one-to-one cash match?
Exactly, yes.
Correct.
Art? Speaking of art.
Sounds like we're well positioned to take advantage of the grant monies and can put it in, address some of the citizens' concerns and needs according to the survey, so, yeah.
I realize it makes a difference what the piece of art is, but do you have a place to put it? Is there, they just, they re-landscape, they rebuilt a lot of stuff on the outside. If you're going to do a statue or something of that type, I guess it could be something inside the building as well, or?
I think that'll be, like, determined in the process, you know. Elizabeth Graff has been with Arts Commission, and she's a landscape architect, and we've been taking photographs of the entrance of the library through the seasons. Friends is involved, they might have an opinion. I think it'll be a collective on where and what, and that'll be determined.
And part of the process will also include some additional public out, input.
Yep.
I think you mentioned coffee.
And outreach.
And this is a two-year process, is what this was?
The final report does not have to be done until July of 2017.
Oh, so a year and a half, basically, from. When will the, when, I guess on both of these, when do the award, when do we know if we're awarded?
It would be approximately around June, I think.
For both of them, so then each about a year then for the, for this one?
Yes.
Okay.
And also, I, this is backstepping a little bit, but once you're into the Entry Track program, the one that we talked about before, then you can reapply each year. So you, and the application for the second year is less than what we need to prepare for this time, so it's kind of a, a working capital, ongoing program that they have available.
Okay. Anything else?
I'm good.
Good for it.
All right, let's put that one on consent as well. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I still don't see Sarah up here. Are you, are you here in Sarah's place?
The summary report.
Well.
If you have specific questions, we will have to have finance come up, but Dawn is out right now, so.
We'll skip back up to number two then and talk about the disbursement report, if you want to give a little report on that.
Certainly, with the proviso, that if you have specific questions, I'll answer what I can.
Okay.
As the CCSR indicates, that seven, or 93% of our expenditures are in the major expense areas. Payroll for $923,077. Professional services for $217,488, which of course includes our consultants' fees for various projects. Sanitation, $253,627. Contractual payments, $25,357. Supplies, $74,375. Construction, $4,062. Utilities, $71,787. Equipment, $8,848. And insurance, $12,892, for a total of $1,591,513, again, which is 93% of the total expenditures of $1,702,491.79.
So no major equipment purchases this, this go around?
Not at this time.
No half-year payments on insurance?
Right, yeah. We're not getting the big, the big hits here, not in December, so.
We'll get some in January, I have no doubt.
We'll see a little bigger bill then. You guys have any questions that Gary can't answer?
Does he have something for us to sign?
I do.
My name's even on there. They expected me.
I think we need a quill pin for this.
Yeah.
More formal.
A big feather.
Yes.
Okay, then we'll recommend their approval on the consent agenda as well.
Thank you, sir.
It looks like Alisa's going to wait up here for Scott and talk about the 2018 highway sa, local highway safety improvement program and grant, grant application. Alisa and Scott Bonträger.
Okay, I'll, I'll start and just get an outline of the project going while Scott brings up his presentation. This is the Local Highway Safety Improvement Program, and it's a program that the Idaho Transportation Department funds through the Local Highway Technical Assistance Council. And as it said in our staff report, we had previously applied for this existing project a little over two years ago. And during the time that we were developing a previous project, which was Polk from Rodeo to E Street, we found out that we were over budget for what we needed to do. There were some additional underground utilities and some other work that needed to be done in order to complete that project. We had some additional environmental condi, or, yes, environmental conditions, I guess you want to say.
Yeah, we have mitigation.
Mitigation. And so that project went over budget, and it was a very important project to the community. It's one where we don't have a sidewalk on either side of the, some of the street there. It's one that is heavily traveled by a lot of young children who are going to school and different things. So they allowed us to go ahead and take the funding that they had allocated for this project previously, and move it into the Polk Street project, which will be up for construction this summer. And so now, we're going to go ahead and reapply for this project, because it was one of the ones that scored higher in need and had the criteria that was included in the grant application for the ranking and rating system. So we're bringing it before you again, and I did have a question this morning from Councilmember Steed about the cost, and my brain started to warm up then after I did talk to you, and one of the things that happened with this grant, after we had submitted it previously, we worked with LTAC, and they had us, they increased the budget on it once we were done. And so the budget were now, we actually had a contract ready to sign on this project previously, and they had worked with us to increase the budget on it, and were going to award us a larger amount than we previously applied for, and that's, didn't happen too long ago, that was probably a little less than a year ago?
We initially applied in 2013, the contract came in 2014.
Yeah, so I guess it was a little over a year.
So if I may, the question had to do with the fact that you were repeating 133,000 throughout the CCSR, and my question was, no inflation necessary. So now I am confused, which number, which numbers are we talking about?
When we initially applied, the first time around, we applied for 82,000.
Yes.
That didn't include preliminary engineering or any of the administrative fees for ITD to advertise, or any of the administrative fees that LTAC takes for these type of projects. Plus, it didn't have other things in there for the contingency or, or other things that LTAC had made us aware that we would want to add the additional funding for, so that's why they had given it to us. With this time around, we have rechecked the design of what we're going through, and we believe that the 133 is still sufficient for doing the project with the addition of all those other things that need to be added to it.
Okay.
And when I prepared the CCSR, I went back and looked at what we call the 1150, which is the, the cost summary, and I had pulled the numbers off of the adjusted one they had provided us, rather than going back to the very first application round, so.
Okay.
That explains that. So Scott has a presentation for us.
Just got a visual right here. So just a reminder of what the project is encapsulated here. Starting over on Asbury, we're going to be looking to do three pedestrian ramps and two crosswalks, and the crosswalks on this project is required to have durable-type material, so instead of using paint, use a thermoplastic, which is the melted plastic that typically lasts three to five years, depending on the weather conditions and everything. So we'll be doing, bringing the ADA ramps over here up to Current Code, and then over on Almond, same thing, but we'll be adding a bulb out, or a curb extension here on the south side, so that we can bring pedestrians further out, so that vehicles can see them, they can see vehicles prior to crossing, because there's a, there's a parking lane, and there's also a bike lane right there. We'll pull them out a little bit further so people can see better. Be adding thermoplastic crosswalks at both Jackson and over at Washington. We'll be correcting the slopes to make the alley through here ADA compliant where it comes through, and then over on Jefferson, we'll be adding bulb outs, again, to pull pedestrians further out to make shorter crossings in both the north-south and east-and-west directions.
Are we going to try and, and time this, was it last, a couple meetings ago, we talked about the, the.
Realignment of Sixth and.
Sixth and Ja, no, no, the.
ADA curb ramp.
ADA curb ramps on Sixth, on Jackson, or Washington Street.
Separate contract one.
Yeah, but will it kind of time together so we can kind of have it all?
This funding unfortunately won't be available till the following year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll have, but we'll have all those curb, those ramps in place when we get to these?
So, so if I may, following that, what about the realignment of the lanes at Sixth and Jackson? That, we've got that approved here to do, and what's the status of that?
Talking about the turn lanes?
The turn lane.
Uh, the turn lane is proceeding.
Eastbound, eastbound turn lane.
The, the realignment to?
Yes, that's all been approved, that you designed it?
Yeah, the design is almost complete, and it's going to be ready to advertise whenever we feels necessary to fit in with everything else that's going on there.
So it could happen the same time as this, or possibly before.
So we don't build one of these, to tear it out and put in the other?
No, no, we, we're thinking about that stuff.
Yeah, good. All right.
One other question, if you may. You've got bulb outs in a couple of places, why not other places?
These particular locations that we have the bulb outs called for are areas where we can actually get them out there, like over on Asbury, we just have travel lanes for the vehicles and bike lanes. There would be no room to put bulb outs in those locations. And the locations that are picked, whoops, are the areas where we have the highest pedestrian and vehicle accidents through the corridor.
Got crash data there.
The crash data, of which, when you fill out the forms, there's a certain amount of cost to benefit you get from doing certain type of improvements in areas compared to others.
And Scott did bring handouts for us today regarding the cost, or the, the application format, which shows the cost ratio benefit.
Here you go.
I had, I already have one, so we're good.
Okay, I'm good with it.
Art?
I'm good with it, too.
And this is.
Sounds like all the bases are well covered and thought out.
When will we know? I mean, it's not, the money isn't available till 2018, but we'll know by?
Fall. Um, this project actually has to go on the State Transportation Improvement Plan, the step, and so it has to work its way up through the process, but they usually let us know late in the fall.
Okay.
Sometimes it's been November before we've known, so.
Okay, you guys are good with it?
I'm good.
We'll go ahead and throw that on the consent agenda as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see.
Les McDonald.
Les is up, because we're going to talk about the good old southeast Moscow Water and Sewer District contract extension.
Thought we'd bring you a new topic today.
He's coming to pay off my bet.
So the last time we talked about this contract related to the southeast Moscow Water and Sewer District, the consensus of the group was that we needed to hold a workshop for the council to further discuss the details and the proposed new contract, and we were attempting to do that in December. With the holidays and people's schedules and in and out and everything else, it just didn't come together.
An unfortunate fire.
And, yeah, 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 that as well. So many things came into play, and we were not able to do that in, in December, so we are now tentatively looking at the 20th of this month to hold that workshop and getting responses back from most folks that they can make that, who would be involved, with I think one exception so far. I've also talked to Lois Richard at the district about their availability, and I believe she said she can make it, and probably some of her board as well, to attend. As you know, though, the current contract extension terminates at the end of the month, and so that doesn't leave us much time after that workshop date to really get much accomplished. So with that in mind, we are bringing you yet another extension, this time pushing it out to the end of July, which should give us plenty of time to hopefully wrap this up this spring with the workshop, any subsequent changes to the contract after that workshop, and then running it through council and the board ultimately for ratification, so.
Gary?
I would note that Les and Rod have done a good job meeting with the southeast Moscow Sewer District folks, and it appears that we're really close, it's just we wanted to get that final workshop in so that both their board and the council was fully on board with what's being proposed.
And this isn't costing us anything extra to do this extension or anything like that, so.
No changes.
That's not, that's not a worry. Walter?
Well, Gary realized that the, the problem with the last presentation was with the people at this table, in that we couldn't get our minds wrapped around the difference in rate structures, et cetera, for in-city, out-of-city, through the district, not through the district, et cetera, et cetera. So in what, if I remember Art correctly, we were looking for both better information and, and other options.
And I think we've got.
To address that.
Yeah, we, we will.
With your comment about the district, it wasn't so much that at that meeting the district had a problem, I don't think, it was we had a problem, understanding.
Didn't mean to insinuate the district had an issue.
Yeah, and we anticipate bringing back some additional information about different types of structure for the, for the rates, as you've mentioned, further evaluate the pass-through flow, the connection fee component, I know that was one of the issues that was brought up that last session, so we've been analyzing that and have come up, identified some alternatives to what was in that previous version, that I think might simplify that somewhat, so. That's what we will present to you at the workshop on the 20th.
Okay. Well, I'm not going to be there, but.
That's all right, I missed, I missed the last one, so.
Well, I'm just hoping that this time when we get the contract, it's going to be long enough so we aren't revisiting the poor topic every six months.
Well, again, there's a 10-year term on these contracts and renewable, that's what's been in the draft.
Okay, well, this, you're basically just reporting this to us that we're having a workshop, there's really no.
No, it needs to go on consent.
Actually, there's a. Oh, the extension, this is the extension, yeah.
Yeah, on the back page is the extension document, this would go to council presumably next week for consideration.
And we're okay with consent agenda on this one?
It's fine.
Okay, let's go ahead and do that. Thank you. All right, now what everybody's been waiting for, Roll Cart Alley Collection, and Tim Davis is going to present that to us.
Good afternoon. Excuse me. The city of Moscow is in the process of implementing a new single-stream recycling program, which is scheduled to begin February 1 of 2016. The city previously issued a request for proposal, or RFP, for a modification of services to the single-stream recycling to its sanitation provider, Latos Sanitation, Inc. We received a response to that RFP back in March of 2015. The RFP response outlined several proposed changes to routing and minimization of alley service for the purposes of maximizing collection efficiency and also reducing costs. As a part of the implementation process, the city and Latos Sanitation intended on collection of both garbage and single-stream roll carts from within the street rights of way, minimizing necessary collection of these roll carts from the alleys. This process had successfully been implemented in various Moscow neighborhoods, and the two that come to mind, we did a alley-to-street service change of about 157 customers out off of West A Street, would be to the north. And shortly after implementing the roll cart garbage collection program, we had an issue down on Sixth Street with the north side parking allowed on Sixth Street, and we asked a number of those residents through there, I believe there were 60-plus customers, to alter their collection areas. Those were the two largest ones that come to mind. Within the past three weeks, notices were sent by Latos Sanitation to approximately 456 Moscow garbage and recycling customers directing that roll carts be moved from the alleys to the street for collection. Since that time, in part because of the street parking situation in certain neighborhoods, complicated by the lack of driveways and inaccessibility of residences to the street, the decision to terminate alley pickup of roll carts has come into question. Recent snowfall and resultant ice and snow berm accumulation also raised additional concerns. In light of the recent concerns and complications, city council asks that these alley collection notices be suspended until the issue could be revisited. On Tuesday, January 5th, the mayor, the city supervisor, myself, met with management from Latos Sanitation to discuss this issue and notify them of this action. New notices were sent out Thursday affirming the, the action that was taken, in hopes that most customers affected would have received that by the weekend.
Right, so you, when you, when you met with Latos Sanitation last week, you said, "Okay, let's push this back indefinitely until, you know, we revisit this." So with that, what, what would we recommend then? You, you went and visited the site, and I know you and I talked a little bit about that, and you, and you said, you know, "Yeah, I did notice this," and, you know, we talked about the snow berms there.
Well, let's, let's take a step back.
Okay.
When this, when this issue first arose, it was brought to committee, I believe it was Councilman Kraus asked me to visit the 456 folks that would be affected, and obviously our big concern was someone that might have a steep hillside or steps or that type of thing. Obviously, the Fort Russell district looks quite a bit different now than it did back in July.
Right.
The other concern, a lot of the concerns we're hearing is, a lot of, lot of the homes in the Fort Russell district don't have the driveway access to the street.
Right.
And the concerns are valid, in my mind.
Right.
We have a lot of folks that I think, especially in these weather conditions, would really struggle. That being said, I would like to accept responsibility for not giving this the scrutiny that I probably should have. I did scrutinize the, the parking situation, but again, I'll say, you know, there's a lot of different things that come into implementation of a program like this. It was an oversight on my part, and I obviously fell short.
Yeah, we got a lot of moving parts here, and that's kind of, you know, I remember when we talked about when we first went to the roll carts, we wanted to wait and see how that played out before we even stepped in this direction, and we stepped in it a little bit, of course, but that's how things go. Walter, you have something?
Yeah, I was pleased that I did not get stopped by the police the other day when people saw a car they hadn't seen before driving up and down their alleys. But I did go out and drive it, and I see what the questions and concerns have been raised. It appears a lot of these houses, the only access from the back of the house to the front street is through the house. There are fences, there's landscaping, it's been there for 100 years. The driveway itself, like you said, is a problem because the driveways help people set trash containers out, and we've got snow berms along the curb line.
Alley, alley.
And, I mean, no, the driveways, the driveways give them an open place.
Right, right.
Now that we're trying to use the things on the snow plows to catch them and not pile the driveways too much if we can help it, so it gives a place to set a trash can, but they can't keep it in the back out of sight like we expect them to, and then get it to the front yard without going through the middle of the living room, and that's just not gonna work. So I, I think Tim's recommendation, if that's what it was, that we stay with the alley service as it has been, is the best, best thing to do, and I'm, and I'm certainly in favor of it.
Art, you had a comment?
Oh, I had a whole bunch of them.
Okay.
Walter's got to some of them already, but I can see potentially some of the current alley service may have alternatives available, but a lot of those places where you've got narrow streets, parking on both sides, you could pull out your carts, place them out curbside, somebody parks in front of them, now what do you do?
Well, you know, like I just got my cart, and they even want the carts, you know, a little bit of room between them so they can work them.
And so when you go fishing for these carts with these large trucks, that's neither safe nor efficient in picking up the trash, and so currently we've got our alley access that's been working for years and years, and so my big question is, what changed? You know, why give up alleys now unless there's a real overriding reason to do so?
And I agree, and I think the purpose was to try to not only move the single-stream carts out, but the garbage carts in order to gain some efficiency with the automated trucks, and that was the scrutiny that I gave to the whole plan, was we have so many neighborhoods that allow parking on the street that the folks that live there cannot control what happens when a cart gets blocked, you know, and, you know, it was just-
Gary?
I think as Tim indicated, it definitely was a miss on our part assessing the neighborhoods in the summertime when students aren't there, and so on and so forth. Parking's a little less crowded, no snow berms on the streets, so on and so forth. If you recall, when the original proposal, RFP, response from LSI, one of the reasons that they wanted, this is just as Tim said, they wanted to go to fewer vehicles, less men on vehicles-
More automation.
Or less personnel in the vehicles, certainly better service, quicker service, economies of scale, so on and so forth. Bottom line is, in our city, as in a lot of older cities, there are neighborhoods where they don't work really well. They work great in new subdivisions, like you say, where you have driveways and perhaps wider streets and less congestion. So I think in this case, in speaking to LSI, they understand as well, their, their proposal was based upon those economies of scale and those efficiencies. So they were clear to point out to us that that's a service, a labor-intensive service serviced by a different type of vehicle than the ones that were anticipated in bringing their proposal forward. So Tim is working with them to try and determine what adjustments, if any, need to be made to compensation to LSI for changing that collection, maintaining what it is now rather than going to what would have been a more efficient collection. So that's the second part of this that will be coming forward.
Art?
So the, do we know that the scale of the new automated vehicles is such that they can't safely and effectively negotiate the alleys as they're currently configured?
Yes, the automated trucks don't work very well in the alley simply because we have a lot of overhanging trees, fences.
Speaking with the streets department today, and they indicate that the overhanging bushes and trees and things like that have been trimmed back recently over some of the objections of the neighbors, but now that they're trimmed back, are they still precluding access of the trucks to get to the-
The automated truck is also a larger truck, and they only have access from one side, so it would mean running up the alley and then turning around and running back down the alley.
I don't know, this could be something that could be negotiated with the people who live on the alleys, I would think, that people could just bring it across to the other side of the alley instead of clear looping round. It might be a minor adjustment that could take care of a lot of these issues.
Well, Walter had something?
I understand what you're saying, Gary, about LSI and their efficiency and their pricing, but quite frankly, I'm not gonna be very receptive to a change in contract until they walk in here waving a check for our quarter of a million dollars we fronted them on their screw-up on the color of the single-stream recycling carts. I mean, I get it, but they need to get it. That'll go a long way to make me feel better about looking, and I will look closely at their numbers. It's 100 and, how many houses we're talking about?
456.
456, how many, how many blocks of alleys, do you know?
I don't know off the top of my head.
I mean, we're gonna, I'm really gonna look at it.
Fully understand, and the issue, it's not just, the discussion that we had made very clear that Tim needs to look at their numbers, look at their routes, there were route changes made, day changes made, it was all designed to accommodate this new collection system.
Right.
So Tim will work with them to come up with hopefully some good alternatives. I think the, the, one of the discussions, I believe we had, was we're really talking about maybe 10% of our rate payers-
Right.
-or customers here, so there's still 90% that apparently still works pretty well and can take advantage of those efficiencies. Not being a sanitation guy, Tim will be working with them on that, and, and the proposal that comes in will be fleshed out, and certainly if you want to ask the status of the recruitment of the city money, I'm sure, certain you can do that at that time, but Tim will have that all fleshed out before it comes back to the council.
So something else to clarify a little bit on what Gary touched on there, you know, we talked about when, when we started this, that there would be some route changes, some day changes for folks, now there's gonna be some more, so, you know, hopefully we're not getting too much confusion, but, you know, this is something we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to deal with as, as this goes on.
What we discussed in our meeting was LSI is that if council chooses to keep alley service, obviously that's gonna be a different vehicle.
Mm-hmm.
Let's sit down and go through this and give it 90 to 120 days, which would put us into the summer months, and do, if we have to, just an alley-only route, and there may be, what I'm getting at is there may be some further route changes down the road, but they'll, they'll definitely have to be reconfigured to, to make them more efficient.
But the route changes that you just made will stay in effect until that's decided?
They will stay in effect until that's decided.
Art?
Another aspect relative to LSI's desire for efficiency is that if they use larger trucks on some of these narrower streets with parking both sides, I don't see any efficiencies resulting from having to go fishing for trash cans that are stuck behind cars, or having to skip those trash cans and then get the phone call, "Please come back tomorrow and pick up my trash," and so I think LSI needs to revisit their own perceptions of efficiencies through this program, and perhaps find that the alley service is more efficient than using the larger trucks on the streets with all of the interference from the cars and other problems, so.
So this isn't a public hearing, but it is a public meeting. I think, I'm hoping that we've kind of addressed folks' concerns, but on this part, I'm not talking, anything else has been in the newspaper lately, we'll talk about that later, but that, that will come up at a future meeting, I, I would imagine, but as far as the alley collection, you know, if, if somebody else has comment on that, you know, go ahead, Gary?
I think probably people are interested in the recommendation of the committee-
Oh.
-whether they need to comment or not, what your preliminary-
Well, I think our, you know, it's kind of putting the, well, let's put the card out there, I think our recommendation is to-
Alley.
-go ahead and stay with the alley, you know, I don't-
Until we can revisit and get some better information-
Absolutely.
Specifically from LSI, and looking at what alleys need to change and what ones are okay, what level of truck service needs to go through there, we're operating here kind of without all of the information we need to have, but I think we're aiming towards it stays just the way it is until we can get everything better nailed down.
Yeah, it needs to go to full council for that decision next Monday, Tuesday, and if you discover that there's a block or two blocks where going to the street can work and discuss it with the people involved, that they understand that there are ways to do it, and there may not be or may be, then I would, I would leave it, you know, with alleys. I've got a couple of other issues with Tim here when you're ready, but if you want to try one more time, see if anybody wants to talk to us.
You guys okay with, well, you guys are okay with recommending, recommending-
Staying with alleys.
-that we stay with it? Does anybody want to come up and say anything?
They said they were changing the days, you need to come up.
Introduce yourself and everything.
Name and address, please.
My name is Ryan Rounds, I live at 1021 East F Street. I was just wondering, they, the letter that I got said they were changing the alley service, and they were also changing the days, and I hear you correctly, the days will stay, so, all right, few days, thank you.
All right.
Tim?
Correct.
The days will change.
Yeah, the, the days will change to what you were told, but it will still be alley service.
And, but the letter is correct in terms of, of-
The days.
The days.
Okay.
I mean, that, but that is subject to change again, so.
In three to six months or something.
Come on up if you have something.
I'll be kind enough not to repeat what I said last time to you.
Gotta know who you are and where you live, though.
I'm Roberta Radovich, 809 East B Street.
Hey, thank you.
I just asked him about truck sizes. Apparently, the current recycling trucks that make it through our alleys without difficulty are, to the best of his memory, the same size as the newest sidearm large trucks. The small trucks that have been servicing our alley with the back pickup, which can actually pick up from both sides of the alley easily, are even shorter than that. Those are the trucks that seem sensible to me to maintain in our alley areas. One error in thinking is that somehow the new trucks are sized unsuitably larger than the old ones. I don't believe that's true. I think that needs some verification before it's accepted.
Yeah, that's, well, that's why we got the 120-day-
Yeah, so that's, that's something I'd ask to be actually verified.
Thank you.
There was a question that came up at the council meeting about how the alleys somehow received less service in terms of snow plowing. That is, in fact, an advantage, because when the snow plowing occurs on the streets, you get the two-foot-high berms. In the alleys, you don't get those berms, and it's a little bit more pack on the surface of the alley, but still very much more accessible in terms of pickup of trash cans.
Okay.
Okay.
I think that's good enough for me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else while we're, while we're playing here? Okay.
My name's Bobby Kelly, and I live at 517 North Garfield, which is one of those streets in the old part of town that has an alley, and it's very convenient-
You're lucky.
-and I couldn't wrap my head around how I was gonna get those carts out to the street anyway.
In the living room.
Well, yeah, you know, or wheel it down the alley and up the street and around, thank you very much. I just wanted to say thank you. I think this is a real example of how local government works. I was very upset when I got the first postcard. I emailed Mr. Steed last week and explained why, and I got an email right back saying, "We've heard lots of this, and we appreciate your comments and come to the meeting," and here I am, and you all are apparently on the same page, and you understand our concerns, and I just think, I just wanted to say I appreciate it and thank you.
Thank you.
Don't make us just talk trash to get you to come back, come back to see us. You got anybody else?
Anyone else?
I'm Gail Cochran, and I live at 520 East B Street. My alley also has an apartment building across from it, and when they pick up the apartment dumpster, they come down and they pick up my garbage as well. So I called the city and I was expressing my concerns about no more alley pickup, and I says, "They pick up from the, from the department," and they said, "Oh, that's a different garbage truck." That doesn't seem efficient to me, if my garbage is there, pick it up.
Yeah, well, I mean, we don't really have control over how inefficient they decide to pick up your garbage, whether they're bringing in different trucks for that or not, but I understand what you're-
So that's enough, kind of another side issue.
Right, thank you. Anyone else? You don't live in Fort Russell.
No. Victoria Seaver, 121 North Lilly. So no, I don't live in Fort Russell, and no, you're, I'm still on alley service, but I would cringe at the thought of changing because I don't see how you could do it. I'm in high density, so it's just not gonna happen, but, but I want to reinforce a lot of what you said, that, that you have to leave space between now a garbage and a recycle, and the cars, you don't want to pick up what the fork can dump into the back of the truck. I have an apartment building next door to me, and it has a dumpster, and they come down the alley and they get that dumpster, and they, and they can get the recycling carts, and I'm with you, LSI already needs to prove itself, you know, before they start asking for more money, and bigger isn't necessarily better, and if what's working is working, that's what you stay with. So, and these, these issues are very, 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 very real and important, and it's not safe for people to have to go all the way down an alley and come around.
We get it.
We get that.
Yeah, so thank you. Thank you, and I just want to support everybody, and God forbid you come into my neighborhood because I'll be down there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Walter?
Okay, two more things, Gary, Tim. There's some problem with lids fitting, apparently correctly, on the new single-stream totes. People, I've started hearing comments-
I've had that.
About them. I went out and checked mine, mine fits perfectly well on the large, on the large recycle bin. What can you say to that?
I've had a handful of phone calls regarding the lids not closing completely. I will say that these lids came off the original load of carts, and when those were shipped, they were nested, so all the lids were flipped over backwards. If those continue to be a problem, or they're not operating correctly, obviously we'll get Latos Sanitation out there to correct the problem. I mean, that's part of the contract, is to make sure that these things are operating correctly.
So switching the incorrectly ordered cart lids to the new carts should work. You've got some concerns about them being shipped, shipped where they were cocked open or in the summer when they were, when it was worn.
They've been cocked open for three months, and as you see, it's been below freezing for some time, and they're out of shape, so-
But if somebody's really wants it changed out, get ahold of you at 883-
883-7131.
Or your, your email is on the city website, and you will have somebody come address their particular issue.
Yeah.
So you figure they might melt back into compliance?
Obviously, when it warms up and they get used a few times, things are gonna loosen up. They're new, they've been switched over, that type of thing, so.
Okay, and-
Okay. Okay.
And one other. Gary, I would like to visit the question of where to store these carts, this five feet away from the house, not in your garage, et cetera, et cetera. I would like to get that on a immediate, future Public Works Finance Committee meeting so we can look at that. It's not ready to be addressed today, but to talk to the fire chief, to the city attorney, to yourself or who, and Tim, about why the requirements, what the requirements, and can we do anything about it? I'm hearing about that, too.
Go ahead.
Yeah, you'll recall when we went to the bins, the roll carts, international fire code regulations were such that anything over, I believe it's 40-gallon carts.
Forty-gallon.
Could not be stored inside a garage. Now, seems ridiculous to us as well that you can't have a garbage tote in your garage, but you can have a vehicle full of gas, or a lawnmower, or things like that, chainsaws and cans of gas even, so. But the international fire code is the international fire code, so that's why it's stamped on the carts. Certainly, we can come back with at least a full explanation. Some of these cart companies, when we originally talked to them, either were unaware or it wasn't an issue for them. And they were surprised that the international fire code actually addresses that. And of course, it's a safety issue, and.
Right.
People, some people seem to not believe it, that you shouldn't put hot coals in a plastic garbage cart, which can cause issues. And that's really what they're after, but certainly we can bring that to you, give you the code and the interpretation that we looked at before we ever worked with the carts.
And just to tell you ahead of time, my question's going to be, can we modify that code in the city of Moscow or not?
And just, I don't think anybody's going to get a ticket for putting their garbage can in their garage, so that's.
The other comment I would.
Dan said that.
The other comment I would like to make is that these roll carts, when used as intended, are entirely safe. They're used around the world.
When used as intended.
I mean.
Going to spontaneously combust.
They're not spontaneously combust, no.
Did you have something else, Art? All right. Anything else for the good of the order today?
No, sir.
You guys got anything else?
No, sir.
We'll consider ourselves adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for coming.